An update, we are, this is as of the end of March, we are seventy-five percent of the way through the fiscal year. And we just received our property tax settlement. So we are actually at this point receiving eighty-one percent of our funding from local sources. And only nineteen from the state, that'll go up a little bit as we have no more, we have no more real estate taxes to receive this month. The other thing they always point out is our percentage of our budget expenditures related to salaries and benefits is seventy-eight percent. That's pretty good about where we want to be for this.
So what would you ask, just roughly estimate it's going to go up as far as the ratio between state and local? If you just had to guess, where do you want to hold your fill?
What do I think we'll go to? I'd say, I'd say twenty-four percent maybe for state funding and let's at least seventy-six for local. Because we don't really get any federal money in the general fund, very little.
So the trend is ever decreasing state funding?
Yes, right.
I think when I got on the board, it was like twenty-seven, twenty-eight percent. Now it's twenty-six, twenty-five, twenty-four.
It's either, it's either decreasing or it stays the same while some other sources increase over the time period. But yeah, it's been, it's pretty much been frozen, you know, for years and years here.
Let's just say it's a frozen amount, correct? It's not really a percentage of what we, what we do. So it's freezing amounts as our budget goes up as a function of inflation and, you know, and what we got out of our current village with taxes, it stays fixed, therefore the percentage essentially comes in less, right?
Right, that's a generalization, but that's true. It's not absolutely fixed, but it's for the most part fixed.
Okay.
So then on the, on the, I guess it's the second blue sheet, the front there that shows the percentage of line item budget with real estate tax revenue, about right at one hundred percent of what we budgeted for that item is what we received. And under expenditures, things important to note, salaries, seventy-five percent of the fiscal year is the last, and we're at seventy-four percent of our budgets, that's really good. And seventy-five percent, that's a wrong number on that, that second line there, it says employee retirement benefits, so it's ninety-two percent, it's supposed to be seventy-five percent. So we're right on employee retirement benefits as a percentage of our budget. So we're, we're doing well, we're solid financially and, that's all I've got, must be any other questions coming in, of course. These are, as I say each month, these are up on the district website.
Not hearing any questions or discussion. It's been moving in seconds, so will you please call the roll on approval of the treasurer's report?
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
We get a motion to approve an amendment of this year twenty-three permanent appropriations to add the federal grant expanding opportunities in the amount of five thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars in fourth or status.
Second.
Mr. Carpenter and Mrs. Dorn? Do you think to add besides this is?
It's just a, a new grant that we got that we need to put into permanent appropriations, a small one. Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
We get a, a motion to modify, motion twenty-three dash twenty-five of January twenty-eighth to delete David Carpenter as a board representative to BSCF. Both we approved two board members and the bylaws for BSCF only allow one.
Second.
This is Dorn and this is Anderson. As you say, the, the bylaws for BSCF only allow one board member. We didn't know that at the time.
Right.
As a board, yes, that has since been mentioned to be part of, not a trustee, but a part rather than has a school board representative. And opportunity, unless that's a membership on the board.
Any questions, comments? Please call the roll.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
I'll, I'll abstain.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
That closes the treasurer's report for tonight, thank you.
One hand carry too.
Thank you.
Any motions? You approve twenty-two, twenty-three blanket and super blanket POs as required by the state auditor.
Second.
Mr. Carpenter?
These are attached on the hand carry, the blue sheet. The state auditor requires for, requires school boards to approve the large purchase orders that are outstanding for the whole year. In words, we have a monthly invoice that comes in for a certain vendor. We could do one purchase order for the whole year, estimate the monthly amount will be partial pay each month. In order to do that, we have to approve these. The difference between the super blanket and blanket POs is that the, on the super blanket POs, if it has a lot of account codes on it, they can all be outstanding at the end of June thirtieth, the fiscal year. On blanket POs, only one line item can be outstanding. Don't really know the reasoning for all that, that's, that's the truth of the matter. So we are supposed to approve these and probably should have gotten them done earlier in the year, but these are the ones that by necessity we have, we have placed for twenty-two, twenty-three, probably in a few months. In toward the end of summer, we'll be approving a new list for twenty-three, twenty-four. Got an eye open around something, it's next to see what we spend during the year.
Questions? Mr. Lyman, please call the roll.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
I think that closes the treasurer's report. Next on the agenda is a portion of the meeting where any board members can share your correspondence that they received. Not hearing anything. We're going to move on to good news recognition. First, we would like to recognize our 2023 OA SSA State Competition, ladies and folks, that Belbrook High School Competition Cheer Squad. Kaitlyn Lynch. And last, Southwest Ohio Athletic Directors Association, the Athletic Director of the Year, Charlie O'Dell.
Congratulations again to Kate and to the Competition Cheer Squad and to Charlie O'Dell. You know, Mr. O'Dell puts a lot of time and effort and we've always had a great athletic department to the next level. Social media, getting all the information now, really just does a fantastic job of re-leading our athletic department and supporting great athletes like we have of Kate and Competition Cheer Squad. So, yeah, thank you, congratulations.
Anybody ever need a employee if you want to head out? We're not going to have to do any, any, any. Up next, an addition on the hand carry, we would like to welcome a report to the board. Welcome, Mr. Mark Carrera from the SCA.
Thank you very much, board. We didn't present anything last week, we got two items we're going to talk about today. So tonight, I actually have prepared statements, we'll get it. The sales goes, it's kind of long, but not as long as like the senior night, it's not as long. So tonight, we would like to highlight the success and popularity of two district programs. First, I'd like to talk about the All Day Everyday Kindergarten Program. Originally, this program started out as an extended day program for kids who were struggling in the regular half-day kindergarten classroom. The intention was to help students without charging a fee. After two years of that program, approximately fifteen years ago, the All Day Everyday Program started as a pilot program with just two classrooms teaching the All Day Everyday Program, which benefited approximately thirty-sixteen students a year. The goal has always been to extend this program to the entire kindergarten population where all students in our district would come to kindergarten every day, every. It has been the topic of many of Dr. Cozette's keep-start, keep-stop-start discussions with staff and was a goal to work towards as part of our district's buyer plan. Today, this program has grown to five classrooms with approximately one hundred students in the All Day Everyday Program. Over the years, this program has been funded in many ways, through grant paid tuition, on a sliding scale, the free reduced lunch qualifications, waivers for students with special needs, et cetera. Some years, the sliding scale waivers were not offered in students solely on the ability of a family to pay tuition. We are happy to report that for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, the sliding scale and free education lunch waiver will again be offered to families. As of April tenth, there are already one hundred seventeen students registered for the All Day Everyday Program with anticipation warrant registered. It is a very popular on board district banners. An email sent to Stephen Bell Building Leadership Team to Dr. Cozette and Mrs. Gann, each of you. As educators, we know offering everyday kindergarten to all is what is best for kids. And I think we all realize this is an issue with equity as far as those who can't pay come to school five days a week and those who can't pay don't. Students who attend the five-day program get a much more rich, consistent school experience. I would like to highlight a few areas of that email. First quarter of the school year, our everyday program saw thirty-nine days, saw kids thirty-nine days. The every other program saw kids seventeen, eighteen days. The everyday, everyday program offers approximately five hundred minutes in language arts and construction weekly. The every other day program only gets two hundred and thirty minutes in these same core subjects on a weekly basis. For twenty-three, twenty-four school year, our every other day program will see a reduction STEM, art, library, and digital literacy classes, where students who attend it every day will have weekly access to all of these programs. Stephen Bell data, sixty-seven percent of students who did not attend the everyday program required some form of intervention in first grade. Neither everyday kindergarten nor every other day kindergarten have any form of intervention or help with students who are struggling unless they are on. Those students who struggle in academic areas must wait until first grade to begin to receive additional help, which makes this even a more inequitable issue for kindergarten. Kindergarten needs additional reading help that is already offered for first and second grade. Research clearly shows prevention and early intervention should be provided as soon as possible to ensure success. Some further items of note, the government will ensure the preach strategic plans states we will embrace learning as a lifelong process. Academic excellence will be pursued through a well-rounded, academically rigorous, personalized, relevant student experience. In regard to authentic learning, students will engage in curricular instruction that are research-based, and the district will continue to investigate authentic learning for each student in Belver, children, and schools. In regard to data-informed instruction, data-informed. A long-term curriculum resources plan will be created and implemented to build eight to twelve consistently. In regards to equity, the district will examine systems within the district to remove barriers that impede the engagement of all students in curricular areas. For our all-day, our all-day, everyday program is one factor our military powers ask about when researching districts to relate to. Most districts around us in pre-yeast, county, and Warren Counties all offer an all-day, everyday tuition free option. According to further research, children in everyday third classes typically identically lack their every other day counterparts in reading and math. Teachers who have students every day show that the schedule affords them to get to know their students and parents better and engage in more individualized instruction, a rich, expanded curriculum. Everyday kindergarten provides students with more time to develop basic listening and language skills, experience more in-depth building, and students creating, created a deeper, more positive social bond with their peers. Students were found to be more regulated and socially, emotionally ready for school. The pace of everyday kindergarten affords more time for a flexible and less stressful schedule for students. Students who attend the everyday program are more academically ready for first grade, thus being more confident in their abilities. Finally, we hope that any changes in the kindergarten program will be thoroughly discussed in an open and transparent way with teacher and staff to do what is best for students. So I have nothing to read about any of this.
Mr. Kerr, can you email that statement? So I'll remember that and thank you at the end.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. I was like for transcript.
All right, so the second, the second program, my apologies, second program we're discussing is the Advanced Placement. So the Advanced Placement Program offered at Belbrook High School is a post-secondary curriculum designed by the College Board, which is a nonprofit organization dedicated to promoting college readiness. This program offers students the chance to, according to their website, tackle college-level work while they're still in high school and earn college credit by taking a test in math. Last year, ninety percent of Belbrook High School students earned a passing score of three, four, or five. For the 2022, 2023 school year, Belbrook High School is offering thirteen Advanced Placement courses in a multitude of subjects. And this year, there are three hundred forty-nine individual enrollments in these courses. Collectively, the AP teachers have two hundred thirty years of experience in Belbrook with an average of twenty years of teaching experience in the district. Many teachers began their careers in other districts and schools, so their collective experience is greater. AP courses being offered at Belbrook High School this year include AP Computer Science Principles, AP Computer Science A, AP English Language, AP English Literature, AP Calculus AB, AP Calculus, oh, I'm sorry, AP Statistics, AP Music Theory, AP Biology, AP Chemistry, AP Environmental Science, AP US History, AP US Government and Politics, AP Spanish Language. The AP program is the most valuable metric, valuable of the metrics used by the US News and World Report, best high school methodology, and thirty percent of the score, thirty percent of the score is made up of this metric and is used to determine college readiness. This contributed to Belbrook High School being ranked sixty-fifth of seven hundred fifty high schools in Ohio in twenty-two. The value to students is greater than accomplished these courses. And seeing these courses grow is a testament to our community. This is the path our top students take each year, and we would like to bring attention to the teachers that put in many hours outside of their workday, as many teachers do, helping these students to achieve success. And you know, just a side note, off the record, not off the record, but off the prepared comments, I happen to know that I've had at least two of your kids in my particular course that teach, but maybe more in the future. So thank you very much. I'll email that to you.
Thank you, and we appreciate it. Up next is our open communication period. This is the portion where your thoughts and comments are very welcome. When given the floor, if you could please share your name, address, and any group of filling should be involved if possible. I'm starting to read my speech. Very good. See, I do that as a, I'm still, I think so. All right. Next, then, we move into the superintendent's report.
So new business certificate, we'll do consent agenda if it's okay with the board on A, B, and C, so certificated license employment resignation leave of absence supplemental duty, and then administrative employment resignation leave of absence, and then support staff employment nature leave of absence. Is there anything that anybody would like to have? Is it okay if we do consent?
And just for everybody's, I don't miss it, there is, so a C, an eight C on the hand carry, so that again included is considered consent.
Yes, you have to add the effect. He would be firm on the rich one.
Not hearing anything be poured out, is there a motion to accept the consent agenda of eight A, eight B, and eight C?
No.
One. Please call the roll.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
As a part of that agenda, I would like to pull up a particular person, Mr. Killen is our new assistant middle school principal here at Belbrook, and extremely happy to have him as a part of the team. Mrs. Hill, would you like to say a few words? Who's the new principal, Matt?
Yes, thank you. We are very excited to have Mr. Killen join our staff in here with his passion for students, doing classes for students, which of course is always our great dimension with very, very evident high expectation. As soon as he accepted, I did apologize that we're taking such a big teaching time, but we're just forward and committed and have enjoyed your staff here next year. So thank you.
Thank you, congratulations and well known. Moving on, D, request for proposals, recommend approval to solicit for the National School Lunch Program Food Service Management Company with requests for proposals for the district-wide food service program beginning with the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, so this is required every five years.
Second.
Mr. Carpenter and Mrs. Anderson? This isn't because we're unhappy this is the next year.
No, this is just we have acquired, bought your contract with them, so this is part of the normal request for proposal bidding process that we have contracts like now. So very typical of the start staff process, people and you can see where the proposals are, and then at some point whoever we contract with will bring that in front.
No more discussion? Mr. Lyman, would please call the roll.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Our donation, recommend acceptance of the Belbrook, I'm sorry, the following donation with gratitude, the Lions Club, top dresser for grassy athletic fields of value of four thousand.
Mrs. Dorn and Mrs. Anderson?
So again, extremely appreciative, Belbrook Lions Club is very supportive of the school district. We have a lot of our club's, one of our organizations athletics and support, ask the life of our, for a lot of good amount of money, and they're extremely supportive and want to be supportive of the school, and they are actually now meeting in our schools because of a, they're, they're facilities, so they're actually moving to our school, extremely supportive of our school district. Very appreciative to them.
What is top dresser?
Yeah, I thought you were going to. Yeah. I know he heard that one. What do I hear?
I think it's kind of a research.
Yeah, I think maybe just, just the top layer, maybe top soils, some good soil on top of those fields. I don't know, it costs four thousand dollars.
Yes. Will you please call the roll on accepted gratitude?
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
All right, travel, traveling, calling out of state travel on VHS in concussion northern Kentucky, April twenty twenty-three. Participation WGI World Championships, cost of district includes one sub, teacher, five days, and then the high school VHS drones and schools team is bigger than the A U B S I exponential, exponential. Twenty twenty-three conference in Denver, Colorado, May ninth through the twelfth, twenty-three. Cost of district includes two sub-teachers and that four days, each advising conference is equal to four paid for in federal.
Second, Dorn, Mr. Carpenter? Having us competing in non-athletic areas is exciting too.
Mr. Lambray, do you want to add anything with what is in there?
Yeah, I'm just really glad that we have two teams that are potentially going and in board approval and really, really hard, a lot of, it's great to see students, I focus on academics on the texture of their, as.
One team was national champs last year, yes?
Yeah, yeah, they've all graduated, so this is the two new crews.
You're too humble to mention that.
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yeah.
And Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Is Laura Fisher here?
Yes.
Yes, okay, I'm sorry. I apologize, can we, Miss King, you want to say a few words on Mrs. Fisher? All of a sudden, I look back there and I think that she was a new reading teacher. She was a couple of years ago, this interview was canceled. Sorry, I apologize, I called that all of a sudden, as I was looking back at Mr. Lambray, oh, Mrs. Fisher. She is very appreciative of that.
She was quite hoping that she could.
All of a sudden, I got.
But I am happy to introduce our new reading teacher, Stephen Bell Elementary, this is Laura Fisher. Laura, please. Laura Fisher comes to us from, well, Germany, where a while, but they are a military family. They have three children, they reside here in Belbrook, and for the last three years, she has been teaching preschool. And so we are delighted that she has been at Stephen Bell Elementary. She has been doing an intern and learning a lot with taken athlete, T is here tonight. And so together, they have been working and meeting and a nice co-working relationship and helping children with reading dyslexia. So Laura has learned a lot and is going to bring great things to our school. So we're delighted to have her as the coordinator for Tier Two and Tier Three, so thank you for meeting her tonight. And I know that Debbie Sharrett will be sad every time and come into great things, but we are delighted to have Laura join the staff. You're welcome.
I apologize. Did I miss anybody else? All right, moving on to. All right, moving on to other items, those are, those are exciting things, moving on to other items, here are some information, comments, draft changes, the board policy additions and revisions, this is the first read, we will bring this back, um, to our next board meeting for final approval. Again, some of these are part of, I would say, the, um, the, the normal spring policies that were also policies that the board wanted to, to look at, and Mrs. Dorn and I, uh, that, um, hours, uh, back today before spring break, um, uh, looking at, looking at these policies and, um, but I got, I got it for the, for the, for the night in that second reading, so if you have any questions or comments, don't hesitate to reach out between now and next, uh, meeting, we'll put this back on for yours, if I pack it.
What can I leave to, I'll just throw on the table here, uh, open for discussion, uh, you know, we, we say, and truly I think we genuinely value, but, and I think we're great, we, uh, we get a lot of, uh, always valued, but, you know, from the community, I think they, it's a struggle, um, we're always in the work, our experience with folk, and then we have to come out now, I think, to get regulation, to get their words in in three minutes. And, uh, I recently been attending the trustee meeting, uh, how much you have been, and uh, they wow five minutes over there, and I thought it was a safer, more relaxed, uh, opportunity, some people use a minute, two minutes, have people really take a full five minutes, but just, my observation is that it's a constraint that I don't know that we necessarily are benefiting from, uh, just to constrain people to, uh, three minutes. Uh, you know, but, you know, as soon as they're going, we had twenty-seven people talking about, because like, well, five minutes we would have been, you know, so three o'clock in the morning instead of one o'clock in the morning, uh, but that's just, you know, one of those things that, you know, that I think is anomaly where you have to be that controversial or difficult, and I just, I just like to be able to not have, you know, the, uh, the clock, you know, three minutes, three, three minutes, next thing you're, even then they're trying to wrap it up, and they're distracted, I just don't believe it's going to hurt us as a board to at least allow more, five minutes, um, perhaps we can appreciate that, um, that's my thoughts on that, we want, nothing for discussion here, but, uh, just some thoughts.
If three minutes is, is, um, problem, I'd sort of speak in our policy, there'll be a change we could make to the policy. That evening, we, the COVID and mask and all that, we spent in the, and let people talk.
Well, I think we suspended, we suspended the, like, whatever it was, uh, fifteen minutes or something, or something like that, so we were probably still here, it was a three minute, or, uh, back and watch, I was just really bored, going back and watching, you know, YouTube or, put on stopwatch, what people were doing, but, uh, um, again, that is one of the ones that are up, that is one of the bylaws, there's, uh, policies is up for review here, um, whatever, talk about tonight, or?
Can you talk to, I mean, that is one, I think, um, we have got a lot, we have got a lot more meetings over the years where there has been a significant amount of older participation, whereas prior to that, there are people who came to meetings, so I'm, I hope that everybody has seen it, or, I don't know how many presentations at the OSBA conference about, about participation, how to do it legally, and how to do it effectively. So that's where, that's what's driving our, our change, I think what's in the packet right now, we're using three minutes, but it's, it's, the, um, two minutes, we're talking about the topic, or our overall time limit, because that's your topic, it's, we don't know really well, first, it's, it's super subjective, and whatever people write on the, like, what do you call the topic, to use COVID as an example, if someone wants to talk about masks, someone wants to talk about COVID, and, and, you don't know what to be able to talk about until they get up there, so by topic, it's relative, I'm sure. Um, and then it also allows for, um, I don't remember the exact number, we've got thirty here, okay, an overall time limit that can be, I don't know, go over, bust that timeline, presiding officer, so, sometimes you might want to hold it, that timeline, we usually don't, but we might have a lot of really important things later in the agenda that really, most of it's, most of it's happening. Allow them, as long as it needed to, but that's, that's one of the rest of the changes in the, in the packet.
I mean, clearly, it can't be used as a, an effective bill of absence, uh, for, for new business, you know, but I don't, I can't imagine having, you know, extended beyond, if there, if twenty people speak five minutes, well, maybe it's not, we have to go, like, we gotta get, get done here tonight, but I just.
We did have one, um, meeting where a public comment went on, it was still on, later on that meeting, we were supposed to talk about, just didn't plan to cut short, and that's not what you're, sure, you know, that because there's, there's time to do it, and I thought, and I, people were, they agreed, and they all cut their, and that was the business of the meeting, so, I mean, it's not, number one to do.
I mean, I'm throwing it on the table here, so, but, uh, I don't think we have to, I don't, I don't know.
In other procedure, the proposed is, he states that they must be limited to three minutes, duration of last, and by presiding officer, that also, proportion of meetings during which participation of the public is restricted, limited to thirty minutes unless extended by a vote of the board.
I think the problem you get into though, is you say, you're stating by a, if you limit one person and not another one, then you get, you never get, well, it's, it's difficult to do that. But you said, that's what I said, let, each person shall be limited to three minutes unless extended by presiding officer.
I, I would, I would pick that as for everybody, I would not just, cannot absolutely, and you should not pick one person, you not the other.
That's right. So I guess we might have to decide tonight, right, we can talk about.
Well, I have a procedural question, but actually, it's great, I, I like it, so I'm, I'm curious, um, if we decide to make that change to the petition next month, exactly two readings from there, so I guess I'm asking, do people want to think about that, otherwise I'd be prepared, I think you should propose to make that change in five minutes, tonight, tonight, your first reading, next, your second reading, but I do want to ask, like, true, because I don't know, would Neola, do we need to check with Neola or anything on that as our, having this, for everyone, yeah.
And then the board.
Yeah, I, I would like to make a motion to change the three-minute time limit in the proposed change to a five-minute.
I'm going to ask him.
I don't think, I don't think we need to vote.
I don't think we need to vote, okay, awesome, let's even, let's make that in there, so five.
It's captured in the minutes.
So long, so long as it, I would, we should ask if there's any objection coming in, so if there's a consensus that that is okay, if you have objections, please, I'll try to speak up.
Need a piece that is, there's a portion of meeting during which the participation of, another thirty minutes unless extended by a vote of the board, we don't.
We want to make that, so as, extended by that person, so, I, I don't feel it necessarily being by, I don't mind whoever, who did the presentation, so, it's fine.
Exactly. Yeah, then we'll change it. So I'll make these, I'll, I'll have these changes made, I'll email this in tomorrow.
We need to work with it, it's not thirty, though, on that too.
God, it needs to add minutes, it looks like it's.
Probably limit it to thirty minutes.
Can we add minutes to it?
We're, we're just left out.
Yeah, we're, it's thirty.
Oh, yeah, thirty minutes.
Thank you.
One of the things, call some company here, uh, Mr. Claire, at the end of, uh, January, we met with, uh, you representatives and yourself, one thing we talked about was, yeah, working together on these two, two forty, whichever the commercial companies, policy, and I think we keep, we need to bring that, both, you know, have some feedback and some, some work back and forth on, with the, uh, with the teachers, union on, uh, very important word, leaving us good, suggestions, uh, we value, at least I would value it, I guess, because we're, I don't know what the rest of the things, but, uh, I know we talked about that at length, uh, in January, and we, we wanted to find out how we were going to get that input, or.
Because I actually had this morning to discuss, we're trying to.
Oh, very good, okay. And I was actually going to mention that during board goals here, in like two weeks and so, that's awesome.
You can consider that policy revision separately from the other one, but maybe consider it's not on, in this packet.
Are there comments about first read of draft policy change?
All right, um, summer, before we get to strategic planning, summer athletic camp is a, uh, on the handcarriage, they recommend approval, summer twenty twenty-three athletic camp softball, for, for future activities next year. That's actually, it's actually recommended for approval, um, it's not, it's not a item information actually.
So, uh, Mr. Carpenter and Mrs. Anderson? Question?
The dates are a little slow, but I'm fine, I'm fine with it, that's what I intend to do, but July fourth, and then the list, you hit.
I do not know.
I'm not going to vote for it, and I don't have a problem with that, regardless of.
Regardless of it's June or July, are we going to?
Yes, they can.
There you go. All right, we're saving that June or July.
June or July.
Okay, so let's call the question, of it being in June fourth or July fourth.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kenzie?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Okay. All right, moving on to strategic plan, so, um, everybody has a packet, um, yeah, we discussed this, uh, board discussed this in, uh, late January, at the board retreat in this room, and then also at the last meeting, so, um, a couple meetings ago, the board wanted me to go out and talk to some organizations, companies that do strategic plan work, so I brought the information back to the last meeting, um, and, uh, just making sure that I have the information correct, at this point, um, not looking to work with, necessarily not some group to work on the strategic plan, but looking at what other, um, school districts are doing, and, and some, some of their plans, and taking a look at those to, um, provide, um, some structures from framework, uh, I don't know, what we may want to do, and again, provided some copies, the email, and also to, Mrs. Dorn, provided some copies, uh, of the new, the examples they want to have, was handed out to the board.
Spring break, I'm in my, I'm.
So, um, so, um, so again, I, I don't want to necessarily wordsmith things, however, um, if, if we're, we're either, fine, maybe a middle-of-the-road type thing, but a strategic plan or district goal, I know the board has, has goals that they created, but of district goals, I guess, to me, some differences, uh, strategic plan traditionally gains stakeholder feedback, participation, beginning stages with committees, surveys, meetings, create copy, every action step, um, and, and then put things in motion with, particularly we're taking a look at some things. District goals, um, maybe more of a streamlined approach, um, where maybe at the beginning the district admin to formating some goals, it's, there's a, the board structure and so forth, and higher energy, we spend more with the implementation and monitoring all of those district goals, I remember pregnant from the last board meeting, of trying to say, all number of goals, then with a, timeframe, and being much more focused into those specific goals, um, and so, um, I don't know how we want to, what kind of feedback the board wants to provide on, um, kind of the structure, the framework, and the people who provided, it was more framework construction rather than these specific goals, and, and, that wasn't necessarily the idea, um, so I provide the copies, Sanders, I can make copies of these tomorrow, and send these out to, to everybody also, um, but I don't know if, uh, I have some thoughts and ideas, um, kind of the structure that I like, for, sharing some thoughts and ideas, what they like, um, that needs particular, um, particular, plan, and then also anything else that, that folks have, have taken a look at.
Comments, one, I think, from my perspective, often, you know, we find that less is more, rather than two hundred page, you know, strategic plan that nobody even, just, you know, pick up and grab, but, put a lot of effort in, built on the huge, and then doesn't even look at, it's hard to, to grasp it, you know, so, I like to see something that's short to the point, another thing I think that's really, what to reflect upon is that, it's not like it's one and done, you know, it's over, you know, so, I'd rather do something in, I don't know, three, six months, have it ready for, for the next four years, um, rather than make the process in two years to develop it, and then we have to revisit for another five years, you know, I'd rather produce something in three, six months, and then it's, it's a continual refinement, uh, that, you know, in three, six months, or you have a committee come together, looks at it, and just continue to refine it, rather than saying, we're done with it, and, uh, so, if I'm like, short, three to five pages, ten pages, whatever, uh, in a document, not PowerPoint, and, uh, and then something we would continually, um, I guess, recurring, uh, policies, you know, every, every, whatever, not just every, like, that's all.
I agree, um, then one, the one I supplied from Forrest Hill, I read, like, and if the words strategic plan, and the education setting, and different, meaning there is the perfect meeting that I'm, that came up in my head, and I don't mind calling it something here, but they call their place strategic vision, that, that helps in different words, but, I, one of our board goals, to, our staff and teachers and board, unnecessary words, not that, like, doing unit initiatives and all that is a necessary, you don't want to, I don't want to engage in, um, activity of building a plan that we end up building and running and talking about for the next five years, to finish it, so the next, uh, I'd rather, we're a district who, I nearly all messages were coming extremely well, like, if we were some small district, yeah, we need to do this, and we need to do, but, I want to capture what we're doing well, let's talk about what are, what we hold dear, what are our priorities, uh, this whole mission purpose, beliefs, and their priorities, and then it's just kind of a guiding document, as someone comes up with something that they want to, we look back to the same, hey, does this fit into what, that sounds really cool, how is that right, in line with our priorities, and, I wouldn't, strategic is important, I wouldn't keep it strategic, I don't want the strategic plan, that becomes a tactical plan, as a board, I like the sense of priorities and leave tactical to our, to, to our teachers. So now, I, I am not advocating for setting out on something that years and years to create only at times. create only at times, or the next day I want to get it all perfect. I think strategic is the key word.
And I agree with what Mrs. Dorn said. In my educational background, strategic plan has always meant micromanagement, unnecessary data points, but when that's all you're doing, you're not enjoying it, and we need to fix that, and especially if the task means our board. But we hold dear.
Yeah, and to reiterate all these we're all sharing, she said Springbrough, Miami, Spur, I, Forrest Hill, and Green Local, which might, I don't know. Really just for scope, for structure, for, I'll look up one of these and say this is the only, don't worry.
Yeah, the aspect of the framework, not very specific, but it's something for how it's going.
That help? I don't, are you saying?
Yeah, just wait for other feedback, yeah, that's, I don't know about other feedback. Again, for, for my, from where I'm, where I'm sitting, the, the plan that is structured by, who's there if I'm saying that correctly? The Paul print is on, which whoever that is, I don't know who that is, and then the next plan that Mr. Kinsey provided, to me, those are the, that's kind of what I'm in, would like to envision, there's a, not that number necessarily, but there's a topic, there's a brief description of what that is, what that area is all about, and then there's objectives of what we're, what is going to accomplish that. And so, and there's going to be some action steps at a deeper level within those objectives, how that can be pulled off, but that doesn't need to be necessarily if this one, one, two pager that can be communicated. The booster one's really nice with a lot of stuff in there that's, I tried to build it up a little bit for print, but there's pieces in there. But I mean, that's, that's what I would like, some type of topic area, some, a little bit of explanation, some objectives, and then maybe part of the working document or the actual action steps of how, how is it being done, who's going in, what are the resources needed to carry and how to figure out, want to put something in there and not do all those things. I definitely think for, for term is, is better. Um, in the educational world, three to six months is really fast, really fast, and it doesn't mean that different pieces could be done in that, as you do something else, and maybe you think more quarterly or semesters, maybe we want this done by the first quarter, we want this done by the second quarter, third quarter, you know? Education, more in those terms. Um, and, but of particular action steps within those objectives being done, this is dependent upon what, how robust that particular objective is, you know, might, the goal might be somewhat robust, but there's different phases to implementing that particular thing. And so, um, maybe year one, we're doing phase two, year two, we're doing phase two, year three, phase three, and then, then of those three years, we have a really robust thing, but there's, there's checkpoints and there's things wrong way. Um, but.
That's what I like Springbrough, it's like.
Broke down that way.
Yeah, it actively, yeah, it's like a forum, who's in charge of this role?
Right.
And then every three years, we check off and just done.
Good.
See, those examples, I was just randomly going, were interesting to me, we're kind of about that three-year mark, I mean, because you don't want to turn on at a time, you don't want it fast, it's not strategic. But that seemed like a five-year plan, maybe in a way, it's just like post-COVID, five years is just ridiculous, let's say.
Twenty-five.
Yeah.
Too long. I like that these are, what, these must have been four to six, right, major priorities and so forth. Four, four is a, I kind of like, just, you know, it's, it's limited, even three or four, where you could say, these, these are things that if we were to focus on, if we can accomplish a meaningful way, and there.
I want to be the first school, I didn't stay like the ones that the, I mean, again, well, I wouldn't care, I would be fine with the number of objectives to be, continue, like let's catch what we're doing, right? Call it, that weird one, this is really continuing. Again, not, you're working, it is, this is working and we want to document that we're going to keep doing it.
We're hearing that people are stretched thin, you know, there's extremely are exceptional holders, I mean, those goals we're going to get to in a second, how can we help us? I think that was, that might have been the last thing for me, just like giving permission to just, I wouldn't want anybody to freak out and be like, oh, hey, this board, because we're the third best performing district in the city, wouldn't it set a goal to be the ninth? Like, no, that's, that's ridiculous, we're crushing it actually, but it broke, don't get me. Of course, we have recognition areas where we do need to be charged, we're aware of that, sure asset, of course, you know, and there probably are some, I mean, to socialize with teachers and stakeholders, we understand, others receive, what I was trying to say earlier though, I, I'd like to produce something soon rather than later, just empathize, you know, it's just, it's just a shell to outline, then we revisit for years or whatever. We've been talking about this for years and we still don't have it, but I'd like to have something soon, early and later, even if it's not a fully baked picture.
So when you say soon or later, what does that translate your head?
I'd like to see something in place by the meeting next week.
Okay.
Uh, they should have something to point at.
And I want to make sure that stakeholders, like it's not too fast, I want it to come from administrators, Miro and Aguirre, it needs to feature in that one.
First of all.
Do we want to spend a chunk of time with that on our next work session, which is, I think in a few weeks, or is that?
I think we're going to pull that out.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I'm meeting with administrators, we could definitely start to put some things together, together. Um, I would want to be careful of maybe not overlapping with board goals, if the board is working on something, maybe would be smarter, more strategic if, if it's not part of both the strategic plan or the district goals, if it's, it would work out that way. And I, the areas I'm really seeing, I think we need to, to, to focus on, these are things I mentioned last, last board meeting, we're completing our process, documenting those things that are holding well, going well, and then also looking for improvement, making sure we're on the same page. Facilities is definitely something that we need to take a look at. Um, so that's, and there are a lot of work with focus, reading positive, so those are the, to me, those are the three things that I think should be included of those particular, you know, around those particular areas. Communication and finances, I don't know, the, the board goals on those two areas, we need of that, or there needs to be something in our, in the plan also with the.
Certain things, healthy areas, I mean.
Right, doesn't mean that we, it doesn't mean the district's not working on those, but it does, it does need to be in the, quote, strategic plan.
I don't know.
All right, I'll start, I'll start working with administrators on the goals and the areas and trying to get something like a draft together and so forth, and get some feedback from the board and so forth. All right. And can I have the copies of Springbrough, I'll make copies of those tomorrow, send those out to everybody. It's all right if I can have those copies, Mrs. Anderson.
Yep, yep, I emailed you, we'll come.
Oh, okay. Is it Kevin's favorite, 150 pages down there?
Oh, that's a hundred.
I don't know.
Lots of. There's one example, but I don't know.
All right, up next is just kind of a touch point opportunity for school board goals. These were kind of finalized at our February ninth meeting, so calendar time, I know that seems a little far away now, but it's 73 outside, but really that was only, I don't know, a couple, couple meetings, so we don't have a lot of meeting time. So kind of a touch point, I'd like to. But also, I mean, the board gives. So good stuff is happening already, even though it's been just a couple of meetings. Going from one, settled on create new, I think this is, it's communication between board, staff, a very successful curriculum night at the high school, and also during the new curriculum, thank you very much, Miss Gann, for all your hard work on that end, everybody who was involved, I was great with that, and I wanted to touch, this one was compressed prior to earlier, a lot of really good stuff came out of the six-hour work session we had, our folks were, were kind of, committed, really, that conversation. One of the things, several things were presented, but one of the things that I thought was really interesting was looking at some policies, or, or at least making sure the invitation is there and maybe that we're, would like to receive feedback, along with the controversial issues, that's of interest to us, and it's also of interest to teachers, making sure that's serving everybody well, serving the teachers well.
Yeah, I know, under number one also, we had some great communication with staff, you know, Dr. Cozad and I sat in a meeting with our counselors, that was, and then I believe so, things are, are.
Do want to plug, and I, I can be, go through this too, the board events, our calendar where we sign up, meeting things, some of us are, and others going on there, lots of us are at things, but we didn't, we were going to be there, be there in official capacity, we're, and sometimes we want to do both, sometimes we want to be there. Be better about, because that's not, we're going to be a, as a board representative, so that the bowling principles, no one went back to your spectrum. So that we can serve that, have this one there.
And we also have a new banner that we put on the floor, it's like a, like a trade show banner, you know, that has the district board of education, so if you are standing up in front of fire council or whatever it is, that, that people will put that together. So if there's, you know, that's the office, there's an event that you're going to want to be at, um, just get ahold of me and we can find out a way to, to get it there or to pick it up or so forth, so I know that was something the board wanted, and some type of.
That's really insightful, and I think fair, you know, there are times I come to the schools and even the front office don't know who I am, you know, and fairness, I sometimes often don't know who's, or anything like that, so anything we can do to build facial awareness, name recognition, correlation, even with ourselves, I suppose, or more so, it's good, and so you can just, little props like that can help a lot, I think,
Do you have the Sugar Maple Festival booth? Yes. Yeah. Last year was the first year we had a school board booth at the Sugar Maple Festival, this will be the second year we're doing, trying to make an increased presence at school, but that's popping up all these things, but also we need to do things to, to different, maybe. Thanks for taking the site. Uh, okay, uh, task number two, consider all new proposed costs through a lens of fiscal responsibility. Number three, develop a plan for systematically reviewing board policy, we want to pause on this one, so I mean, part of, phew, we got a stack, because we, along with the regular role stuff, that just kind of tops us here, we go through a couple of different sections. Um, I'd be curious what the board is interested in doing for the next section, or what this systematic plan might look like for continuing to review board policy. Um, basically, I think, or I will say, we have kind of a quick turnaround, we have a meeting in two weeks, maybe people can come then, if there's something, a particular perception or topic, or even if somebody kind of wants to put together like a.
I can do that, I have my, I will say, I don't think we want to do it, I haven't gotten familiar with how this is all structured, you don't want to do it like, two thousands, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, that's, they're repetitive, so if we get that all the way to the thousands, there's lots we need to change that, for example, the tobacco use policy. Administrator side, so you don't really want to do it by chunks, because then you're going to get all those things wonky and trapped with one another. Um, so I'll, I'll volunteer to take a look, and put out a proposal, what, chunk it up by something manageable that we can do, with the next few chunks.
That'd be great.
Thank you. Thank you.
Last, support the teachers by advocating for the lifting of unnecessary burdens due to, for example, state impositions, unfunded mandates.
I think for that, we are really highly dependent on teachers, just the one those are, you know, there's no way that I can know what, you don't have a proper idea of what that might be. So I think just here, teachers is the one, and for Cillis, the Dominion, Dr. Cozad, the administrators, but I can imagine that they're there to cover stuff. Please, help us, help you.
We need to get away from, well, we're doing this because we've always done it, we have, we get it from, we're doing this because it has this type of specific map. If you don't, we aren't coming up with, it says, it has value, then why are we doing it? So, yeah. And I, I guess, you know, that's something that we're not going to know, the president is necessarily going to know, and it's, it's people who are actually having to do some of these tasks, for their leadership, so that it gets visibility, so if you feel like running, and you don't know the value, say so.
Follow up, make sure it's been passed on.
Yeah, make sure it gets passed on.
Any other thoughts? If you'd like to talk a little bit about graduation?
Just the announcement, um, we've had a, two years ago, we had great weather last year, we had really good weather, except maybe the thirties, that was, we had to turn the hand out at this moment, so the rain ended just fine, so.
I can't understand that to be.
Oh, yeah.
Present. Or sun and rain.
Yeah, be prepared.
This rain has brought very good luck to the graduations, since we had it outside, so thanks for the frost, and then we will have good weather again, so the rain days on the 21st really is nice to do at our own facility and outside.
Sorry to ask this question, respect, so what would happen if we just have, you know, really terrific weekend and just rain and?
Mr. Cozad sent out a huge, like.
Yeah, it'll be one, two, doing it.
It was like a choose your own nature.
Hopefully we won't be the. Thanks for thinking about it, because we've taken half of what we've seen, we've been festival, whole weekend's been trash.
All right, we're to the end of the agenda.
I'd like to have a comment. The Sugar Creek.
I'd like to add one comment, the Sugar Creek Township police have a levy on the ballot. Part of their, part of their police levy is to support school resource officer, which I think is something that we, of course, support having a resource officer. So keep that, keep that in mind when it comes time to vote.
Any other closing comment? I'll take a motion to adjourn. So, who is?
Second.
Mr. Carpenter and Mrs. Dorn, who is colorable?
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn? Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price? Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
We adjourned at eight thirteen PM, thanks so much for coming.